Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Tuesday evening, February 21st. I now call this meeting to order. I invite all to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please call roll?
With pleasure. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We'll start with our first ceremonial item, a proclamation for Black History Month. And we have Reverend Lori Carter Owens, President of the NAACP San Mateo Branch, to receive the proclamation. I'll start by reading it. Whereas since 1976, Black History Month has been an annual celebration of Black history and culture and a time to recognize all that shapes the identities and experiences of Black Americans. And whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and History has declared this year's theme, Black Resistance, dedicated to overcoming oppression in all corners of society and focusing on the historic actions of Black people and allies who have fought against injustice. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the progress that we have made and the lengths we have gone to rise above the challenges of the past, but it is also a time for action as social and systemic injustice continues to disproportionately impact Black lives. And whereas throughout American history, we have witnessed how leveraging the power of protest, education, legislation, and everyday acts of resistance can force change and make us confront oppressive rules and philosophies that hold us back as a society. And whereas the City of San Mateo is committed to eliminating all barriers of racial discrimination in our community and encourages our citizens to explore local educational opportunities and resources available through the San Mateo Branch of the NAACP, the San Mateo Public Library, and other community organizations, I therefore, or now therefore I, Ameren Lee, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize the month of February 2023 as Black History Month. And be it further resolved, we call on all citizens in the City of San Mateo to seize all opportunities to act with intention, determination, courage, and compassion to build a better community. Reverend Owens, our esteemed President, would you care to make some remarks?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Lee. On behalf of the San Mateo NAACP, I would like to thank the City of San Mateo for this proclamation, and also I would like to thank the City for its longstanding support of the NAACP. We know that you have been there for us, attending our annual fundraiser and being an advocate for us, not just in the month of February, but throughout the year. So we appreciate that, and I just want to say again that we still have a big job ahead of us. One of the things that we want to be cognizant of is here, even in San Mateo County, there's still a lot of work to do in terms of eliminating institutional racism. Even though this is a progressive county and a progressive city, one indication that I see almost every time I write a piece for the San Mateo Daily Journal, there's one person in particular who comes back, and in the case of the last piece I wrote about Black history and the importance of it, he basically said something to the effect of, you know, you're the perpetual victim and you need to stop. Now, this is coming out of San Mateo County. You know, even in 2019, I was called the N-word outside the chambers of the board supervisor. So this stuff still goes on. We have a lot of work to do, but I appreciate the City of San Mateo and its dedication to supporting the NAACP and the mission of the NAACP. And if I might, just before I sign off, I would like to invite those of you who are in attendance to visit the many Hoskins Black History Museum. This is a treasure in San Mateo County that we don't have in other locations, and Carolyn Hoskins has put together an absolutely phenomenal collection of artifacts of Black history. And I really want to encourage you all to go out. There's only one more week that it is open, and it's at 880 Jefferson Avenue, Redwood City. And what I'm understanding is we've got people coming from municipalities and schools throughout the Bay Area, but we haven't had a whole lot of participation or visits from anyone in San Mateo County. So that's a little bit embarrassing, and I really, really would love to have you all just, you know, take some time or your lunchtime or whatever and pop over there, 880 Jefferson Avenue, Redwood City. It's between noon and 5:00 p.m. And again, they will be closing at the museum down on February 28th. So please go out and visit and learn some things that you probably don't know about Black history, not only in the United States, but right here in San Mateo County. So again, thank you so much for the proclamation and wish you all well. God bless you. Thanks again.
Thank you, Reverend Owens. And I just want to piggyback on your plug for the museum. Actually, I just reached out to our superintendent, Diego Ochoa, and asked him if he can send out a communication to the district to encourage his classrooms to go and visit the museum during this last week. And maybe there's opportunities for us to work together to formalize some of the linkages between district schools and the museum so that we have a steady stream of visitors to that wonderful museum. Also, I wanted to mention, and we'll discuss it again later in the evening, but there is a gala coming up hosted by the NAACP on March 12th, which I will be attending, thanks to the City of San Mateo. And I would like to invite my council colleagues to join me in also attending on March 12th. So it looks like there's some nodding heads, and we'll have hopefully some strong council attendance at the gala. And later in the evening, we'll be discussing potentially buying one of the program ads. I was talking to our city librarian, who's doing really interesting work to help document some of the Black history in San Mateo County, and actually working with the African American Library Council, so our San Mateo Library Board Council, that is looking at the contributions of Dr. Hutchinsonson and ways to memorialize his contribution and actually have an exhibit there. So that's something I'm hoping that we can sort of tie into the program book if the timing aligns. So we'll be revisiting that later in the agenda, but I wanted to surface it since it ties into the proclamation. So thank you, Reverend Owens.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Again, thank you all for your support. God bless.
Wonderful. And we have two ceremonial items. This is a great night when we get to hear from Hip Housing. And let's see. We have a Certificate of Recognition from the City of San Mateo, recognizing Ebertson V. for representing San Mateo through art. Amo mi casa, puedo vivir, comer, jugar y sobrevivir. Oh, that was a Spanish test I was not expecting. Okay. October 2023, Hip Housing Annual Calendar. So I am so proud to present this Certificate of Recognition. Thank you so much. Oh, and Hip Housing would like to say something first. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Bean. I'm on the board of Hip Housing for many years, and I'm just ecstatic to be here tonight.
Sir, oh, do you mind holding one second? We're getting the mic ready.
Oh, okay. We're not ready yet.
Almost.
Almost? Now we're ready? Okay. So my name again is Bruce Bean, and I've been a longtime member of Hip Housing. I'm very excited to introduce you to Eberston tonight. He's very excited to be here tonight. And so Eberston was one of 250 contestants that joined us and was drawing amongst these. And Eberston won the drawing for October. So we're very excited about that. Hip Housing has been in the county for 50 years, and each year we help about 1,200 people, and we're very excited to be here tonight to accept this from Hip Housing and to give you context. I know that calendars have become a little bit less in use these days, but I want to encourage you to have one of these because they are so joyful to have around your house or your office, wherever you have them. So I just wanted to encourage you to have one of those. Hip Housing Luncheon is coming up on May 5th. We are going to have Dr. Burke Harris as part of Black History Month. You may want to join us for that part of that. And tonight, Eberston, would you like to tell us why your house, what does home mean to you? And you can say it in Spanish.
Stand up here, close to here. You want to read it? You remember?
Do you want to translate for him if you don't mind? Thank you.
Go ahead, Eberston.
Get in so I can see what you're saying here. If you want to read it in Spanish, I'll read it in English. Say it loud, say it hard. Do you want to say that? Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
You'll read it? Okay.
So it means to him in Spanish, it's amo a mi casa, puedo vivir, comer, jugar y sobrevivir. I love my house. That's where I can live, eat, play, and survive.
So now Ripple, one of our new members of the board, has a few other things to say about the statistics of Hip.
Thank you. Congratulations, Eberston. We're so proud of you. Thank you for such a beautiful drawing. Just, we wanted to thank you for having us here today, and I wanted to share a few stats on behalf of Hip Housing. So in the City of San Mateo, we currently have 59 people in home sharing matches. We also have four, we house four families through our self-sufficiency program and 397 tenants at our owned and managed properties. During the fiscal year of 2122, our program served over 3,200 individuals throughout the county and housed 1,241 individuals by supporting 420 new and existing home sharing matches. We have 49 families in our self-sufficiency program. That includes 40 adults and 77 children, and we provide 462 hip-owned and managed affordable units to 684 individuals. We hope tonight that this calendar resonates with you, as Bruce said, and spurs you to consider the importance of safe and stable homes, especially in a region that is so defined and we can all agree by housing challenges. We ask that you help spread the word about our programs so that we can support individuals and families within our community in San Mateo. Please feel free to reach out to any of us if you have any additional questions on our innovative programs. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And can we please have Eberston and family join us in a photo?
And while everyone is getting organized, I would just like to say as a former Hip Housing board member, I have seen up close the great work this organization does, and I am so excited to see you all here tonight. Thank you.
Este, le quiero decir, lo voy a decir en español lo que dijeron ahorita. Este, este es el programa de Hip. The Hip Housing ha sido un recurso invaluable para los que luchan para romper el ciclo de la progresión y superar la falta de vivienda. Desde el 2001, en corcus del calendario anual de Hip Housing, ha servido para inspirar a los niños, expresar lo que el hogar significa para ellos a través del arte. Cada año reciben 250 a 500 entradas de niños desde el kinder hasta el quinto grado en el condado de San Mateo. Esta noche estamos reconociendo a Eberston, un estudiante de primer grado de San Mateo de que tiene el arte fue seleccionado para el mes de octubre de este año. Eberston, es con gran aprecio que le presentamos este certificado reconocimiento. Gracias por compartir tu arte con nuestra comunidad y por ayudar a transmitir el mensaje de Hip Housing sobre la importancia del hogar y la inversión en el potencial humano. Felicidades, Eberston.
Felicidades, Eberston.
Eberston! Yay! You want to hand these up to the, can you give these to the council people?
Yes.
Vamos a darle uno a cada membro del consilio. Sí? Vamos tú.
It went to Mayor Lee.
On their turn. Ella está la más importante. Thank you. That's always one of my favorite parts of the year. Next, we will ask our deputy city clerk to please read the consent calendar.
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number four, Fiesta Meadows Park Restroom Remodel Contract. Item number five, Poplar Golf Course Trash Capture Project Agreement. Item number six has been pulled from the consent calendar at the request of Councilmember Hedges. That is, US 101 State Route 92 Interchange and Multimodal Improvements Project Letter of Support. Item number seven, General Plan Update Supplemental Budget Appropriation and Contract Amendment. Item number eight, 360 First Avenue Second Lease Amendment. Item number nine, Burrell Park Deed Restriction. Item number 10, Personal Computer Replacements Purchase. Item number 11, Fiscal Year 2021/22 Single Audit Acceptance. And finally, item number 12, 1654 Seigrant Street Unit Number Two, Property Owner Appeal of Permanent Relocation Benefits.
Thank you. Apart from item six that was pulled by Councilmember Hedges, is there any council member who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Okay. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on any consent calendar item? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only, please.
I have no hands raised.
Wonderful. Okay. So can we, Councilmember Hedges, would you like to address the council or the staff?
Through the mayor. I asked for this to be pulled because I think it's such an important issue for people east of 101 and also for people that need to travel for shopping to Bridgepoint, the matter of congestion. And I think this is the beginning of maybe solving some of those problems, although it'll be long term. And I would like for that to be explained to the community about exactly what we're doing here and what we think the long-term gain will be.
To the mayor, if I could ask Director of Public Works Azelia Mitch to come up and explain what's going on with that project.
Good evening, Council. Azelia Mitch, Public Works Director. This is, the action requested tonight is to support a race grant application for the multimodal project. We have been working with the Transportation Authority as well as with Caltrans to take a look at the 19th Avenue corridor. And it is a multimodal effort to take a look at a mobility hub to improve public transportation, Samtrans buses, as well as improve the congestion in the area as it relates to flow and how to get to the freeway, and as well as improving bicycle and pedestrian traffic. This is one effort. We are also doing a corridor study to take a look at improvements east of Norfolk and also the intersection. So this effort is just one piece of what we've been working on to improve congestion, take a look at improvements at the intersection, improve the flow on the Fashion Island Bridge, and overall reduce congestion and improve travel times.
May I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So, thank you, Azelia. Could you explain where the multimodal hub will be and what that is in reference for? And also the bicycle lanes on 19th Avenue, where they'll be and whether they're protected or not? I think being protected is important.
Absolutely. So the scope of the multimodal hub is really focused on the park and ride infrastructure that's under the highway. And Samtrans is, through their reimagine process, is taking a look at how to improve travel between public transit travel from San Mateo to San Francisco. So part of their efforts is to reimagine their services, but that requires having infrastructure, like a better facility, to facilitate that. So the first step is to really evaluate the feasibility of what can happen in the park and ride lots to, one, create that hub, also install electric vehicle infrastructure, charging stations, and potentially assess what green infrastructure improvements can be done in those lots. The second piece is to take a look at how to better connect the bicycle network on 19th Avenue. And so as you all know, right now, it's not a protected lane, so we would be looking at the feasibility of installing a two-way bicycle-protected infrastructure through that corridor.
Could you also comment on future projected ideas for 19th and Norfolk?
Absolutely. Yes. So part of, we are doing this in conjunction in-house. We've taken, we've done transportation model scenarios to take a look at the current general plan growth as projected now. Now, we haven't adopted the general plan that we've been evaluating, but we've been looking at improvements to reduce congestion, and that means what do we need to do to improve delays and increase flow-through on that bridge? So specifically at the intersection and also on the bridge, on the Fashion Island Bridge. So we have a few scenarios that were currently evaluating that we would bring back to council to figure out what options would be preferred so they can be built in coordination as well with the feasibility assessment on the rest of 19th Avenue. There's a lot going on on this corridor, so I hope I did not confuse you some more.
No, it's very good. Thank you, Azelia.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Azelia, and thank you, Councilmember Hedges, for elevating that for the public's education and the council's education as well. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Through the mayor, if I may clarify, that we're taking a motion first on consent calendar items three through five and seven through 12, and we'll take a separate motion for consent calendar item number six because it was pulled from the agenda.
Thank you for the clarification.
Move approval of items one through...
Five?
Yeah, and also seven through 11, I think it is.
And I second.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Is there another motion on the floor?
Move approval of item six from the consent calendar.
Second. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Wonderful. Okay, let's see. Now we move on to old business, item number 13.
Public comment.
Oh, yes. Yes, here it is. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, it is subject to the council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
We have one speaker, Henry Jason Jr. Welcome.
Good evening.
This is part of your first test. Thank you, Martin.
Okay, thank you.
We can restart the clock for you.
Yeah.
My name is Henry Jason. I live at 711 South Bay Shore Boulevard, a three-story condominium complex with 30 units built in 1985. My purpose for being here is to request a change in upgrading in the current building codes pertaining to earthquake building safety. The recent 7.8 Turkey, Syria earthquake and aftershocks show the tremendous loss of life and damage following a major earthquake. We live in earthquake country. On the average, seismologists record on their instruments some 27 earthquakes every day in California. I live in what is seismically designated as a, quote, "soft storied structure," end quote, a building which has large open spaces on the ground floor from the many garage doors, in our case, some 23 garage doors on the ground floor. Seismic engineers have determined that such structures are most prone to major damage and collapse in a major earthquake. I would like the city to mandate that all such structures be inspected and retrofitted where needed to better withstand a major earthquake here. Unfortunately, several years ago, a state bill was vetoed by the governor that would have required such earthquake building codes for soft storied structures in all of California. Since then, various cities and towns in the Bay Area have enacted such codes for their own municipalities. These include the cities of San Francisco and Oakland and others. Seismologists state that we are due for a major earthquake in the Bay Area. The USGS... The USGS scientists described the Hayward Fault, quote, "as a tectonic time bomb due any time for a magnitude 6.8 to 7.0 earthquake." The last major earthquake there was in 1868. On the average, major earthquakes occur there every 150 years. Then there is also the San Andreas Fault and many others here. It could happen on any one of them at any time. I ask the city council to also seriously look at amending our earthquake building standards to a, quote, "functional recovery standard," end quote, for new buildings, such that they are repairable after an earthquake, not just survivable. That is the standard in all of earthquake-prone Japan. However, requiring inspection and retrofitting of soft-storied structures is the step that I am requesting now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no other speakers.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll close the public comment, and we will return to old business, number 13, item number 13, youth commissioners to the Parks and Recreation Commission, ordinance introduction. Looks like we have our presentation from our deputy city clerk, Martin McTaggart.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. The item before you is an ordinance introduction to provide youth commissioners to the Parks and Recreation Commission. As a brief overview for this presentation, I will provide a brief background and the origins of this topic of increasing youth engagement within the city's boards and commissions. I will provide council with some context regarding the qualifications for service on boards and commissions. Council will then receive a summary of the proposed ordinance, followed by some potential future actions that may be taken by the council. By way of background on this topic, the city council during its January 29, 2022 special meeting discussed options to expand youth representation on boards and commissions. As such, this became a strategic goal for fiscal year 2022/23. On October 3, 2022, the city council provided direction to staff to add non-voting youth members to the Park and Recreation Commission. Staff conducted research into practices adopted in other agencies, arriving at the approach taken by the City of Belmont. The action taken by the City of Belmont was to add two non-voting youth members, who must be at least 13 years old and no more than 17 years old at the time of appointment. For additional context on this matter, council will be aware that one of the requirements for service to boards and commissions is outlined within the charter that the members of all boards and commissions shall, while serving, possess the same qualifications as required by this charter for election or appointment to the council. And Section 2.01 of the charter states the qualification to include that the individual be a qualified elector, thus residents under the age of 18 would not be eligible to serve as members on a board or commission. Other agencies have looked at this qualified elector requirement as a potential barrier to participation on boards and commissions. For example, the City of Santa Monica's 2018 Measure RR amended the city charter to adjust the eligibility requirements for service on the city's library board, personnel board, and airport commission from that of qualified elector to resident of the city. Turning to the proposed ordinance introduction being brought before council tonight is to add two non-voting advisory members who must be at least 13 years old and no more than 17 years old at the time of appointment, or youth commissioners. Also, youth commissioners must present written documentation of parental or guardian consent to be considered for appointment, and youth commissioners shall serve only in an advisory capacity and shall not con towards the quorum of the commission. Moreover, each youth commissioner shall serve at the pleasure of the council for the term of one year and until the appointment and qualification of a successor. Youth commissioners may be reappointed for one additional one-year term. Other technical changes to this section is represented on bullet point two of this slide, and council may decide to adjust the term and reappointment process. Council recently, just with regards to potential future council action, council recently discussed some potential further steps relating to increasing representation on its February 11, 2023 Blue Sky Meeting. As a reminder, the next steps in the goal-setting process are currently scheduled for March 20th, 2023, and April 3, 2023, excuse me. The previous council received a study session concerning the impact of the elector requirement upon non-citizens' ability to serve on boards and commissions. As noted on this slide, other agencies have updated their boards and commissions' membership requirements to align with Senate Bill 225, which removed the elector requirement for appointment to state boards and commissions. I do want to provide council with a quick note with regards to some of our activities in the area of youth engagement, particular Generation Voter through our youth activities council activities. For those unfamiliar, Generation Voter was initiated by two high school students in the city of Burlingame, and the intention here is to provide accessible entry points for young people to engage and learn about the elections process. In partnership with the Park and Recreation Division, we facilitated multiple preregistration drives during the 2022 election. Our preregistration drives were student-led and achieved one preregistration for every minute, for 30 minutes, at both Aragon and San Mateo High, and we have more events scheduled for 2023 and beyond. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you so much. Do any council members have questions on this item? Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you, Martin. Is staff recommending tonight that we amend the charter per the SBE 225 notes, or how does that factor into what we're doing tonight?
That was just some additional context with regard to some activities that have been going on within other agencies. The action before council is just to introduce an ordinance to provide for youth commissioners for the Park and Recreation Commission. That slide was just kind of teeing up some further action further down the road.
Very good. Right, because it seemed to me that what staff is recommending tonight doesn't require amending the charter necessarily at this time for what we're proposing tonight. That's correct. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes, please.
I really like this. I like the age range. I'm very much in favor of it, getting young people involved as soon as possible. And quite frankly, I think it should be extended at some point in the future. I know we're not going to deal with that tonight, but the more young people we get involved in the city, the better off we're going to be in the future. I run into multiple people that are very smart that have no idea what a city manager for government is. And so I think getting people involved and understanding the system we have here is very, very good for the future.
Thank you. And so we did have some comments at Blue Skies and then also other Blue Sky priorities that could potentially fold into an effort if there was interest in evaluating a charter amendment to include making the change to... from qualified elector to resident of San Mateo, which would allow many classes of community members to participate, including those who are not... who are under 18, who are ineligible to vote. So it could have a really... a very important equalizing effect in terms of getting the boards and commissions more reflective of the community that it's serving. So I think that... I'm glad that you included that in the presentation. So this is the time where if no one has comments or questions, then we'll open it up for a public comment, please.
I have one hand raised. Go ahead, Owen Day.
Hi, members of council. My name's Owen Day. I'm 14. I'm a resident of San Mateo. First off, I'd like to thank the members of council for continuing to demonstrate their devotion to uplifting the voices of young people by retaining a priority regarding youth seats on boards and commissions at the Blue Sky Strategic Planning Session. And more specifically, I'd like to thank Mayor Lee for her work to uplift the voices of young people in San Mateo and how she consistently fights for better representation in our local government. I'm speaking tonight in support of the ordinance allowing for two non-voting or ex officio seats on the San Mateo Parks and Rec Commission. This will allow for youth voices to be heard more meaningfully than in previous years of our city and provide a fresh, much-needed perspective on many matters, including climate change, community outreach, and numerous social issues. For these reasons, I also support amending the current ordinance during this meeting tonight to include two non-voting youth seats on the library board, the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, and the Community Relations Commission. Having youth advisory members on these commissions will allow for the involved youth in our community to be actively involved in policymaking rather than be relegated to minor decisions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Isabel Escobar.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Isabel Escobar, and I go to the College of San Mateo. I want to thank you for recognizing the need for more youth voices on commissions. We ask you to continue to encourage for more youth voices on boards and commissions by further continuing to uplift youth voices. As I am here to tell you my support to amend the ordinance of San Mateo Municipal Code 2.27 to ensure the appointment of two non-voting youth advisor or ex officio members to the council, as this will provide more input of youth voices on the commission board. We ask that you further include two non-voting youth members additionally on the Community Relations Commission, Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, and Library Board Commission, and following to the Parks and Recreation Commission. In order to adhere to the creation of more youth voices in San Mateo, we collectively help ensure a different perspective on issues that concern youth in San Mateo, discussing on how they feel on pressing issues on what they believe can ensure the conversation includes youth when designing on factors concerning youth. I ask you to further consider amending the ordinance to include more youth voices. Thank you.
We have no other speakers.
Thank you. We will close public comment, and I want to commend our young people for speaking out. It takes a lot of courage to come to a meeting and to speak your truth to adults, so thank you so much for chiming in. And I've been working with young people on this initiative for now two years. We did a petition, which gathered over 100 signatures, and the young people were very active in not only going out and looking across other jurisdictions and models for youth participation, so doing due diligence and homework, but also doing a lot of individual conversations with the recreation department head at the time, Sheila Canzian. They met with each individual council member, my former colleagues. They advocated at the previous Blue Sky session. And so for the item to come forward tonight in the first reading is really a huge success thanks to their efforts and shepherding this along for now two years. So that's a really great accomplishment. So I want to ask for some feedback from our city attorney. Would it be appropriate to consider amending the ordinance tonight to include additional commission seats, or is that something that would require advance notice?
It would require advance notice. It's not on the agenda, so it couldn't... and plus, the ordinance would have to be written, so it wouldn't be something that the council could consider tonight.
Okay. And so in that case, if there's a majority of council that's open to that idea, then we can ask for a study session to be agendaized?
Certainly.
Wonderful.
I'm open for it.
Sorry, Councilmember Hedges, did you say something?
Yes, I'm very open for it, as I said earlier.
Wonderful. Okay, so would anyone like to make a comment? Yes, Councilmember Lorraine?
Sure, I'll just... I would like to thank those who made this possible tonight. I am excited for the possibilities of introducing youth members to our Parks and Rec Commission, and I am excited to explore the possibilities of expanding to other commissions in the future. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Nash?
Thank you. Through the mayor, I also would support evaluating, expanding youth participation in some of the boards and commissions mentioned, and would point out specifically that the library is actively seeking youth participation to augment civics programs since there is not as much focus on civics in school. That could be a wonderful opportunity for youth to join with the library to start to work on things.
I just would like to go on record as also offering my support, and I'd like to see us open this up to other committees and commissions as well.
Wonderful. So with that, I would like to make a motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz-Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, and we look forward to seeing that come back to us in the discussion about additional commission seats for youth advisory members. Thank you so much. Our second old-business item is item number 14, Winter Storm Flood Relief Fund Appropriation and Agreement. We have a presentation from our city manager, Drew Corret.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the city council. The item before you is the Winter Storm Relief Fund Consideration. So just by way of background, at the last council meeting, council provided direction on providing a winter storm disaster relief fund, including a $150,000 city contribution, requesting that it be administered by a third party, specifically Samaritan House, and I'll give an update on where we are with that in a few slides, and then providing benefits of up to $5,000 of relief funds made available per household or business. So I want to take a minute to go through the specifics of the eligibility tiers. Tier one was up to $1,000 of relief funding, and it would include personal or business property damage and potentially displacement expenses such as hotels and meals. So the next tier would be up to 2,500 in relief funding, and it would be any tier-one damage plus repairs and cleanup of minor damage that does not require a permit. So things such as like removing and disposing of damaged contents, or doing any painting or flooring or tiling, things like that, that wouldn't require any city permits to do. There's other minor damage that would require a permit, and as an example, what you would see most often in this case would be replacing or repairing any affixed appliances like furnaces or water heaters. Now, those would, as I mentioned, require a permit. However, those permits could be handled over the counter, meaning you come in, you get the permit that day, there's no plans required, it's pretty straightforward. And in that case, we would waive the fees for that, and we have confirmed that we can waive those fees without needing to backfill with general fund dollars. And then finally, the third tier would be up to $5,000, and it would be any tier-one and tier-two damage plus any major damage that does require plans, permits, and inspections. And this... Something in this tier would be like a structural alteration, like having to do framing work would fall into this category. And again, similar to the tier-two damage, we would be able to waive the fees for permitting and inspections on this. As far as next steps go, I have had a conversation with Samaritan House and have provided them with a draft agreement and scope of services that they're currently reviewing. They're amenable to administering this funding for us. They have suggested an administrative fee of up to 12% of the funds administered. Should Samaritan House ultimately agree to what we come to a decision on tonight, we would have them prepare an application in English, Spanish, and simplified Chinese. Based on our discussion, we felt like it would be best for the city to handle... to be the primary body that handles the outreach, so we think that we can get it out to as many people as possible so people are aware that this is available. We would have a 30-day application window initially, and then after that application window closes, there would be a lottery to determine which households that applied got funding, and ideally, we could fund as many folks as possible with the funding that's available. And so the action for tonight, I won't read this verbatim, but it's basically three things. It's adopting a resolution to appropriate 150... It's adopting a resolution to appropriate $150,000 for the fund, it is authorizing the waiver of related permitting and inspection fees, and it's authorizing, uh, me to enter into an agreement with Samaritan House to review those applications and distribute funding in substantially the form presented in the, uh, attachment to the staff report tonight. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Do you mind elaborating on what is covered in the 12% fee?
I'm sorry.
Do you mind elaborating on what, what is encompassed in the 12% administrative fee? So what is the scope of administration?
It is, um, providing the application, so creating the application, um, uh, creating a website to, for people to go to, to get to the application, they would be able to, they're not going to be able to do a web-based application, it would be a download and fill out and email in or send in hard copy. It would be, um, keeping up with all of the applications, um, all of the, the dollar requests that come in, um, reviewing them for eligibility against the criteria that we've presented, so that would be substantiating the expenses that have been incurred already or to be incurred with a, with an estimate from a contractor. Um, they would also be doing things like verifying addresses, um, ensuring that they're a resident or a business in San Mateo. They would, um, consolidate all the eligible applications and then create a, a way to have a lottery to select the applicants. They would then, um, notify the applicants and distribute the funding, and then on the backend would provide the city with a report on who, who received funding, what their address is, what specifically they received funding for, and, and what amount they were funded at. And so there'd be a full accounting of the funds that were distributed.
That's great. Does it also include, um, application support?
Yeah, they would be able to answer questions about, you know, any concerns that folks had about the application.
Great. And, um, and Samaritan House was one of the primary administrators for our San Mateo Strong Grant Program, is that right?
They were, and they also, um, just locally to the city of San Mateo, we, um, had them distribute our CDBG-based rental relief funding, um, for both renters and, and, um, daycare, childcare providers, uh, as well.
Very credible nonprofit. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Nash.
Thank you, through the mayor. City Manager Corbett, I remember from our discussion during the, the study session, uh, we had talked about making sure that these public funds, we would be able to account what came out of these public funds because there are also private funds that have been raised, that may or may not, um, be administered by Samaritan House. So I, my question is just to make sure that we can identify what specifically these funds go toward, and I think what you just told me was, yes, we would have that.
Yes, I mean, part of what, you know, Samaritan House will be doing is providing us account, an accounting of how the funds are utilized. If the privately raised funds are also provided to Samaritan House as a contribution to this fund, um, I, I think ultimately if all of the funds are fully subscribed, we'll get that same accounting. Now, we won't be able to necessarily say which ones went from the private funding and which ones went from the, the city funding, but if they're all subscribed, you would know where the city's funds went ultimately. I think the, the question would be is if, if the funds were not fully subscribed, right? If, if there was, if Samaritan House had $200,000 and only 180,000 of it were, were, were spent. I'm not, I mean, we have to contemplate that, I'm not necessarily sure how much I think that's going to happen, but, um, I think that would be the only scenario where, if there were money left over, where would it go? Would it, would, which, which funds would be used first? I know Councilmember Hedges, Hedges at the last study session talked about, you know, utilizing a double declining balance, you know, where, where the funds were, were sent pro rata out, you know, based on the, the percentage of private and the percentage of public. You know, that does potentially create some challenges if there are additional private funds that are raised, so there's, there's a number of considerations. Ultimately, council will need to determine, um, you know, if that's something we want to address tonight, or if that's something that we want to address should there be funding remaining after we go through potentially a couple rounds if, if we're not fully subscribed. Because that's, that's what I would anticipate, is if we went through a, a period of, of 30 days and we're able to fund everyone and had money left over, we'd probably go back out again.
Yes.
And, and, and try to get all the money spent.
Sure.
And then it would be a matter of if, you know, if we end up with funds left over, coming back and determining what, what is council's pleasure with, with how to address those.
Well, it would seem that you answered the question of the, the need that I saw, and my goal also would be to have no money left over. So if we have a problem, maybe we can deal with it when we have a problem.
May I have a question? Madam Mayor? Just a question, if someone wanted to give a private donation in addition to what's already been collected, is there a methodology to doing that directly to Samaritan House? Because I believe right now it's going through GoFundMe, which takes a percentage.
That's not true.
I wasn't sure, I'm just asking. Okay, well, maybe that doesn't matter.
So there's no, there's no transaction fee for donating through GoFundMe, so that's, I think, misunderstanding. Um, and the GoFundMe account will remain open, and, um, and we are in conversations to set up direct transfers from the, um, the bank, the bank account that is holding the funds directly to Samaritan House.
Thank you for clarifying, Madam Mayor.
So if I could, I, I do just want to make one other point. So in the exhibit to the contract, we've sort of laid out the different criteria for the, for the tiers, um, and we've tried to capture as much as, as we could in terms of things that folks might submit, um, requests for. We did, in the, in the staff report, I did note that, that we do want to give Samaritan House some degree of discretion to make a judgment call if they get a request that they deem as, as eligible, that doesn't necessarily fit exactly the criteria that we set. So, um, I did want to point that out, I do think that's an important aspect of, of this.
I think they're more than qualified to, and have earned that discretion, so I'm very comfortable with that. With that, um, I will make a motion.
I'm very comfortable with.
Oh, we have public comment.
If you wish to comment on this item, please raise your hand. Madam Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Wonderful, then we will close public comment. Um, and with that, I would like to make a motion to-
Through the mayor, if I can briefly interject.
Oh, yes.
Since the contract is still under review by Samaritan House, something the council could do, perhaps, is give the city manager slightly broader authority to, uh, modify the contract currently says substantially in the format as, it could be something including, say, with changes that are reasonably necessary and appropriate, you know, as determined by the city manager. In addition to that, which is different from what we usually do, but we think we've tried to move this process along fairly quickly, so it just gives a little bit of flexibility so that we don't have to come back to the council, just a consideration.
I appreciate that, and, um, and I would like to adopt a resolution to appropriate the $150,000 from the general fund, um, unassigned fund balance to the city manager's office, um, operating budget to fund the city's contribution to a winter storm flood disaster relief fund, um, and to authorize the waiver of related permitting fees, and authorize the city manager to enter an agreement, um, with some, with his discretion and some potential modifications, uh, to review the relief request applications and distribute funding in substantially the form presented.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
That's great news. Good work. Our next new item of business is City Manager, City Attorney, Department Head, and Deputy Director Compensation Plan Amendment. We have a presentation by Teresa, no, do we? I thought we don't. Okay. So, so, um, we do not have a presentation by Teresa Abrinson, um, but I will instead read a statement before council, um, to act on the proposed resolution if we so choose. As required by California Government Code Section, um, 54953C3, the following is a summary of the recommended final action on changes to the salaries, salary schedules and fringe benefits compensation for the city's department heads and deputy directors effective March 5th, 2023. The salary ranges for department head and deputy director classifications shall be increased by four percent. Department head classifications and city attorney shall accrue 48 hours before, shall, shall accrue 48 hours per year of executive leave. Um, we are considering, um, adoption of a resolution to amend the compensation plan to include salary increases for department heads and deputy directors and add the executive leave benefits to accrue 48 hours per year of executive leave for department heads effective March 5th, 2023. So, um, does council have any questions?
I do not. I've reviewed this with, uh, city manager and understand it.
Wonderful, and, um, so I, with that, we'll open it up to public comment.
If you'd like to comment on this item, please raise your hands. We do have one hand raised. Go ahead, Danielle.
Hi, um, this is Danielle Sorkuditsky from Shoreview. Um, I do not feel that the heads of the department should get increases this year, especially given that the town was flooded on December 31st, 2022. Um, if I think about myself in corporate America, you know, we get yearly reviews, this year's review is zero, at a zero. I, I mean, there's no way that there should be increases, given what happened, um, and I think a lot of citizens will take issue with especially public works. You know, individual employees is one thing, they're doing a great job, but heads of departments, we need to see actual improvement and actual changes if we're going to give people increases. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
And with that, we will close public comment.
Yes.
And so, you know, I, I think it's worth kind of framing for the benefit of the public and, um, and also the council, who, um, who might not have seen an item like this before. Drew, do you mind sharing some background and context in terms of how, you know, what, what sort of concessions the city staff made during our, um, our fiscal sustainability plan when we were in the, um, in the red during COVID?
Sure, happy to do so, Mayor Lee. Um, so when the pandemic hit, we, we saw a very severe drop in our revenues, particularly sales tax and hotel tax, and, uh, it, it changed our economic picture pretty significantly. Most of our units at the time were in contract and in some, some phase of their contract, and we honored the contractual raises that were provided. However, with that said, um, the department heads and the deputies are not in, they don't have a contract, they have a compensation resolution, and so they basically don't, don't bargain the way the, the bargaining units do. So, um, they had previously gotten a raise, the department heads and the deputy department heads had, had gotten a raise in August of 2019, and typically then would be due for another increase in August of 2020. You know, because of where we were with the, uh, the pandemic, and we were just getting started on our fiscal sustainability plan, which included, um, some pretty significant compensation concessions from all of our bargaining units, um, that had open contracts at the time, uh, the department heads went first in terms of, uh, not getting a, a salary increase, and they did so, um, from, until February of 22nd. So they went from August 2019 to February of 2022, um, without any salary increase, um, as a result of basically not being a bargaining unit. Um, so they did go the longest, I do want to, uh, you know, again, recognize all of the bargaining units who stepped up when they had open contracts and, and helped the city and worked with the city, um, to ensure that, um, we could get through the pandemic, um, without having to take any, any actions like layoffs. When, last year, in February, so I think at this meeting, or, um, when Finance Director Rich Lee gave our, our update on where we were, uh, our finances were much better than we had projected. And at that point, um, we were at, at various stages of negotiations with different units. Some units were open, and we were able to, uh, do a two-year at 4% a year contract with them. Other units had, um, sort of triggers in their contract based on where the city was financially, so we were able to open up those contracts, and again, negotiate for the most part 4% increases for, for two consecutive years for those units. As a result, the department heads got 4% last February, and then to keep them on, on par with the other bargaining units is what I'm recommending, the 4% for this, this year.
Thank you. So just, so just to high-level summarize, um, the, um, the department heads during COVID went the longest of any other, um, classification in terms of the, the concessions with no raises for almost two and a half years.
Correct.
Okay, and that was during a global pandemic when the city had incredible pressure financially and, um, and a very complicated workload.
Correct.
Okay, and, um, and just, I think, you know, and just in terms of addressing some of the questions in terms of how, how, um, how increases are made, not, not individually, but based on, um, the, the classification or the, the department as a whole. So this is something that is, is standard practice, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and, and then also, just to, um, underscore the point that, uh, when we had the opportunity to provide an increase to other bargaining units, we did, um, you know, when it was financially feasible and responsible, uh, when we had the funding available, we, um, we were able to go from, you know, concessions at zero for two years to 4% increases across the board, is that right?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, so, um, so at this point, the, the department heads are the, all remaining, well, I guess they, they got one last year, but they haven't gotten one again this year, which would keep it in line and standard with the other bargaining units, is that right?
Correct.
Does anyone have any questions or clarifications that they'd like to raise? Yes.
Just kind of going back to private sector, are all of these, uh, deputy and department heads in good standing? Have they all had performance reviews in the past year?
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna ask Teresa maybe to bail me out about how much I can say publicly about their performance reviews.
Sure. But if you were not a public sector, you were in a private sector job, obviously that would be tight.
I mean, we, as, as a, as a, as a broad brush, we do performance reviews for all our employees, for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think it's public knowledge to say what someone got on an evaluation, but we do evaluate all employees every year, and the department heads are included in that review process. And for the department heads, it's on a fiscal year, so it goes from Jan-, um, July 1st through June 30th.
Thank you, Teresa.
So, and I, and I think that, you know, one, one of the things that I think a lot about is, um, is really maintaining the reputation of our organization in San Mateo. Um, San Mateo has, has earned a very high reputation as a desirable place to work, um, and, and I think that that doesn't come easy. Um, this, uh, this organization is, um, is known for having strong and innovative leadership and, um, and attracting really high-quality applicants, and, and I think that that's really important because the city runs by people, people power. And so, um, so I think it, you know, it makes sense, and it is in the city's interest to keep our, um, our compensation competitive, especially, um, in, in the, in the view of, um, what our Director of Finance presented in terms of how challenging it is to actually recruit- our Director of Finance presented in terms of how challenging it is to actually recruit to municipal services and public service as a whole. That, like, that nationwide recruitment and retention in, in municipal government is on a, is in a downward trend. And so the fact that we have had such, you know, such a strong and stable organization is, is because it's been really well run. And, and I, and I think that part of, part of that picture is how we treat our employees and, and taking good care of them because they take good care of us. And, and, and that's not to say that we, we can't always, you know, we are, are always looking for areas to improve. And, and we, we appreciate the public holding us to account. And, and so with that, I will, I'll ask for a motion.
I need to say something too.
Oh, please do. Councilmember Hedges.
So I heard Danielle's comment, and I've got many emails along that line from people in District 4. And I understand the frustration of what happened on the 31st. I think even if we wanted to, and I don't, we couldn't amend this tonight because as it's presented. I think that it's important to look at what's happened in the economy. And a 4% raise based on going without raises for a period of time will not even get them even with inflation. So I think very much what you said, Mayor, is that if we want to keep a competitive edge, we need to keep these, these folks going forward. Thank you.
Well said. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the city manager's recommendation. Do I need to elaborate further?
Adopt a resolution to amend the compensation plan to include salary, salary increases for department heads and deputy directors and add the executive leave benefits to accrue 48 hours per year of executive leave for department heads effective March 5, 2023. I heard a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Wonderful. Thank you. Now we turn to reports and announcements. Are there any reports and announcements? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. So I just wanted to let you know, it was a challenging day operationally with the weather. Power went out at the library twice. It was the same issue, it was the same tree that, that took the same wire out. So obviously, we're going to need to get that, have PG&E trim the tree. But, so the power went out early in the afternoon, came back on, and then went out close to, I think, 6:00. And so at that point, they started the shutdown procedure at the library. So the library is not able to stay open until 8:00 as usual. Central Park, the tennis courts, the fencing came down. So the courts are closed at this point. We'll be assessing tomorrow how quickly we can get temporary repairs done and get the courts open as quickly as possible. And the golf course, while operationally, had three trees go down, including one that went down on a pump station. And so there'll be some repairs there as well. And we're going to get some, I think, some temporary pumps in place to, to make sure we're prepared for the upcoming rains. So that's what I'm aware of so far. But again, it was a difficult day, but we will get back to operating as normal as we can as soon as we're able to.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I thank you for bringing that up, Drew. We've had a, a number of trees go down at Harbertown, creating some damage. Smeath Land is blocked now. We talked to our arborist who's under contract, and he said, this is a mess from San Jose to San Francisco. So I just want everybody to be very careful. If you can, park your car in the garage because there's probably going to be more trees coming down in the next couple of days. Thank you.
And I, I don't want to put our fire chief on the spot, but he did, he did have some updates in terms of how hard our firefighters are working. And while we're on the topic...
And I would also add that I saw coming here a major tree on Alameda, right in front of Aragon High School come down. And there were great staff who were directing traffic as well, trying to keep people safe.
Yes, Mayor and council, it has been a busy day, though we expected some significant wind. We did not expect the 50 to 70 mile per hour gusts we have gotten. So the whole county and whole peninsula in general has been inundated. Our call volume is typically about 40 or 50 calls a day. We're already over 80 for today. So been a pretty busy day. We've been spared some really major issues, but we do have a lot of trees down, a lot of wires down, as was said by Councilmember Hedges. Please be careful out there. There's significant damage and obstructions in your path.
And thank you for your service.
Got it.
Yes, Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. I would just like to take this opportunity to give very quick reports on some of the boards and committees I've been sitting on, having been appointed by the council and the mayor. I had a meeting with the Rethink Waste Board, and I'll just mention that we, like, a big item that's coming up that this council and the public can hear more reports from me on in the future is a site optimization study the, the board's currently undergoing with staff. If you haven't been to the Shoreway Environmental Center in San Carlos, it has about 14 acres of land. We've recently seen new legislation from the state related to composting and increasing compost pickups and multifamily housing and commercial facilities. And so in preparation for that, the, the board's looking to optimize use of the site in anticipation of extra loads. And they're taking the opportunity to add some other sort of things that have been on their wish list, including more parking for staff, bringing the admin staff of Rethink Waste onto the site itself. They're currently at San Carlos Library, and the city of San Carlos said they would like their, their space back. And in addition, a world-class environmental education facility may be in the works. So I'll provide more updates on that and as we go along and look into this. But I also had the opportunity to take a tour of the center with Deputy Mayor Nash and some other council members and cool people, and had a really great time. I would recommend anyone in the public who might be interested in big machines moving stuff around. A lot of technology is in the building, sorting cans, bottles, and more. Go to rethinkwaste.org/tours. You can take a tour, too. I'm also a part of Hope IAC, an inter-agency council dedicated to finding solutions for homelessness and housing for those who need it. One highlight of the last meeting I got to attend there was an update on El Camino House, which is in our city. People who have been following previous council meetings may recall that the county recently worked with the city to purchase what was the stone villa inn on El Camino Real and converted into a center that is currently allowing for previously unhoused people to have temporary housing and receive services and more. It's, it's full with 75 people and, and serving them with dignity. I want to thank Samaritan House, who is helping us with our, our fund, also helping make that possible in addition to a number of other organizations and folks who have made this coalition possible, including Mayor Lee's previous council. If you're interested in learning more about that and what's going on there, you can take a look at www.smcgov.org/CEO/l-camino-house. And finally, I happen to be appointed by the City and County Association of Governments, or CCG. They have a committee based on resource management and climate protection. So I appreciate being appointed to this committee, this countywide committee. It helps advise Councilmember Hedges Committee on CCG. And I'd like to thank and congratulate Councilmember Hedges for getting appointed to a different committee on climate management and environmental, oh, sorry, congestion management and environmental quality. One big highlight that came out of my first RMCP meeting was the county of San Mateo's Office of Sustainability just finished a series of case studies of homes in the county that were looking into becoming electrified. And, you know, getting into the details on what it would really take for real homes in our county to replace various appliances and potentially put solar on their house and reduce emissions. Very interesting for anyone who's been trying to keep up with the recent reach codes in our city and, and the ideas behind them and what's possible today. If you're interested in checking out what's going on with that, there are a lot of cool visuals on that. You can go to smcsustainability.org/energy/decarbonizing-homes/. Thank you very much for indulging me.
I think that you win the awards for best, best announcements. Thank you so much and reports. I, I wanted to make sure that we, we got a tally for, for, among the council in terms of who was interested in attending the NAACP Gala, because the city has generously offered to, to support the cost of our tickets. That will be on the 16th of March. And also would like to suggest that the city of San Mateo take out a, a one-page ad in the program book to highlight the great work that's happening with our San Mateo Public Library African American Advisory Council. So, so that is, I think, priced at $300.
I would absolutely support that. I already personally purchased you tickets, but I won't be in town, so I've, I've given them to two students. But I think it's great if everyone else can, can be part of it, and I'd love to support the ad.
I have a similar issue. I won't, won't be able to attend, but I'm very supportive.
I wrote the date down different. Was it the 16th, or the 12th, or 13th? Is it the weekend?
12th.
I believe I'll be able to attend. I'll have to confirm after.
Yes, I would similarly support the, the funding for the ad. And I would like to attend if I could. I am hoping maybe I could be penciled in at this moment, and then I'll just try to verify that I don't have any conflicts. But if I don't, I would be, I would love to attend.
Great. Any other reports?
Also support the ad.
Just one quick report to, to add what we discussed about the Dominique Hoskins Museum in Redwood City. They also have an outreach exhibit here at the San Mateo Public Library at the main branch on Third Avenue. So I would absolutely recommend everyone go down to Redwood City to see it if they possibly can. But if they can't, at least get to the exhibit here at the library. It's wonderful.
With that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.